Okay, good evening, Hatfield. Welcome to the October 17th meeting of the Select Board. As usual, I'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin with announcements. First of all, real estate taxes are due November 1st and water and sewer bills are due November 3rd. So just keep an eye on those deadlines. I want to congratulate the Hatfield Fire Association. It seems like they had a really successful bonfire this weekend. Unfortunately, was not able to be there. I hate to miss it, but it looked like a great time. So thank you to them and thank you for all the hard work they do. The most important announcement I have is I did get a call from Northampton Fire this week. So on the call was the chief, Chief Peles, Assistant Chief Lemberg, and then the ambulance coordinator, forgetting his name. Do you know who that is? But so they had had some conversations with the mayor and they are experiencing the same staffing issues we are. So right now at this time, they're not going to put forward any kind of proposal to formalize serving Hatfield. So it's good information to have now. It takes options off the table for us and as we think about, you know, the future of EMS here in town. But, you know, I appreciated their honesty. They certainly didn't rule it out, but they are trying to fill some positions and struggling just like all the other departments around here. So just wanted to let townspeople know that I did have that call with them. And then, and I did have a talk with Chief Larity about this. Ed, you said you had something?
Yeah, at the last Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, they received a grant for $750,000 for historic preservation. So what they're going to do, it's designed for any town under $12,500. So they're going to award the grant to various towns that submit an application for the, and it can get up to $100,000. There's no matching funds, but it can be used for window replacements, roof replacements, but you have to prove what kind of impact on the town it would be or your city. And it is going to be very competitive because you have Western Mass, Hamden, and Worcester. So there's going to be a lot of towns fighting for this grant. So I wanted to give the town a heads up, possibly the Historical Commission, that this application will be coming down if they want to apply and try to see if there's something in town that has a very large impact to the town that could, we could possibly get a free grant out of it, that's all.
Wow, that would be great. I just realized I didn't read the public participation policy. And it looks like we have a rowdy crowd over there. So I'm going to go ahead and do that. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings, but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. Did you have anything for announcements? When is, you know, when we have the time change, that's when people recommend you change the batteries in your smoke detector.
Yeah, this is the first weekend in November, I believe.
So we won't have a meeting again before then, right? So a good reminder to townspeople to make sure they do that. Okay. Anyone here for public forum? No. Approval of minutes?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October 3rd, 2023.
A second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Our first order of posted business tonight is we're joined by the Open Space Committee. We have the Chair, Rich Abbott, and Mark Gelot here. And this is to revisit this memorandum of understanding on the rail trail over there on Elm Court. So come on up. So we have a redraft and some of the things that I was concerned about have been put in. So the descriptions of the Hatfield property is flushed out quite a bit more, which is, which is great. But I mean, I was pretty clear that I wanted this only to be in place until they reached a particular point of design. And at that point, we could revisit it because there's just no information, right, on that whole parking area and all of that. So it doesn't do that.
So I talked to Sarah about, you know, that general idea like the town, another point to sign off, that type of thing. And what she was saying is that all the way through up to the 25% design, the town, whoever represents the town is going to be involved in all those meetings and is going to have opportunities all along the way to, you know, sort of change or, you know, report back to selectmen about options. And so that's what her response was in regards to that.
I understand that, but as this stands, we've entered into the agreement right through the end. That's not what I intend to do. So I mean, I understand we'll have somebody there, but they're not able to, that's just like for information, it doesn't come back to us for any kind of approval once the design is more, you know, more flushed out and we see what it's going to look like. I can't agree to something, I don't know what it is.
So I don't know if this helped, but on, at the 25% stage, there's a public meeting with the Department of Transportation, which, I don't know, there was a recent one in the advertising, the Gazette, because they're extending the trail, the end of the bike trail at East Hampton, at the Oxbow, they're extending it into Northampton. And they were at the 25% stage, it's a big ad in the paper in public forum. I mean, if the town objected at that point, if that was brought up, I mean, it's going to stop. DOT is not going to proceed without town of Hatfield's consent.
But aren't we consenting here?
To me, a memorandum of understanding is, it's a document that you're agreeing to proceed, but I don't think it's the final say.
I don't know, Marlene, what do you think about the language?
As an example, I hope we don't end up at this, but our initial meetings with DOT and when Wayne Fiden was still the City, there's a couple of towns who voted that the 11th hour, meaning it was well, it was at the 100% stage, they voted not to do the trail and it didn't happen. I mean, DOT does not want to see that.
And I get that, but I don't know what their memorandum of understanding was. Like, we're agreeing to the project in this memorandum.
On the last, on the second page, the last paragraph, last sentence, says, "Final trail layout and details will be finalized as part of the mass DOT design process."
It doesn't give us any out. It doesn't give us any, that's just a statement. That doesn't allow us to...
So I guess I'm questioning, Rich, if, you know, in addition to that sentence, would it make sense to add language that review with the, with the towns, with those communities?
I guess I just don't understand the problem with having this MOU in effect until we reach 25% and then we'll revisit it. I don't know why that's a problem.
Maybe one way forward is to, I hate to bounce this back Northampton because I'm kind of not really, I hear what you're saying and they're not necessarily getting it. I mean, we're going to have our lawyer review it and maybe that our lawyer would suggest a, some sort of additional phrase, whatever, that would sort of solidify that, put that in writing.
I think that very behavior on Northampton's part is exactly what makes, want to make sure that this is rock solid. Like, they don't seem to want to talk about it. They don't want to seem to hear the concerns. Is that what you're telling me? Like, they're not, they just don't want to?
Well, I don't know. I mean, they've done sort of quite a few projects. I mean, you know, they don't, until I guess they've get, it's all, they don't have funding for this, you know, they don't even have funding for 25%. So for them to, you know, think that Hatfield's locked in, I don't think they think that, you know, because they, they're not, the project's not...
I know, but we have to operate not on what they think or they feel, but what's in this document.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't, it's just, I don't know how you two feel. I feel pretty strongly about it. I, that parking is a big issue for me. That layout, and nobody can say what it's like now. I don't want to agree to anything until I know what I'm agreeing to. So I don't see why it's a problem to enter into this agreement until this is in effect, until we get to that juncture and then we revisit it. And if everything's great, we just redo it. But I just don't, I just think that this, it doesn't really give us an out. I mean, it says that there'll be a final, no, the final, doesn't say what happens if we don't approve of it.
I mean, right, I mean, that's fine and we can sort of, I just don't think this is legally binding. I think the town can get out at any point.
Yeah, I mean, but let's, I don't want to get into like litigation and, you know, what's binding and what's not. Let's just make this simple.
So again, maybe we could just have our attorney suggest language so that we, when we get it back Northampton, ready, you know, if the attorney doesn't have any other changes and we're happy and we have an additional clause and say, "Northampton, you need to redo this," and then we bring it back for signing.
I don't, I mean, I'd love to hear what you two think, but I just think it should just be an agreement until we're at that design phase, not beyond it.
Your specific concerns, Diana, the parking, is that, that's kind of your, the layout of the parking as it's shown on that map on page three?
Yeah, because she said there was no way to really identify what that would really look like at that end.
I mean, it is, it is shown as a diagram on the map and it shows a little piece of it on Hatfield, on Hatfield land. Is that, is that kind of your objection at this point?
But she was very clear that that was just sort of, it was not at all what might be proposed in the final version. I want to see that.
So your, so your concern is that it might take a form like go from four spaces to 10 spaces or something?
I mean, my point is, I don't know what they might suggest, where they might suggest locating it, how large of a parking area it might be. I don't know. She doesn't know.
Yeah.
That's kind of the point.
Nobody knows what someone might propose, yeah. I guess trying to have some sort of language that would, I mean, Hatfield, is there anything about parking that we could put in some sort of language that would clarify Hatfield's position at this point on parking?
Well, maybe just a matter of saying, when it comes to designing the parking, we approve it, that's all. We have to have some kind of approval to it because it sounds like everything's been approved, we're in agreement with the trail, we're in agreement with the land swap up to the parking lot.
Okay.
So maybe, I don't, something in there is just, just saying, you know, when it comes to that 25% design and if they design the parking, we'd like to have a review, an approval for the parking or an objection to the parking or whatever.
I guess I'd like to see the whole design even outside of the parking. I mean...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
That's why I'm thinking the simplest thing is not to put in language about parking because we don't, we don't really know. That's kind of my whole point. Just a juncture in the process.
On one hand, most...
To me, this seems like a very simple request. I don't know why it would be a problem.
Most of the trail's on the Hamp side, right? Except for one section.
Do you have anything?
I also like, again, the maintenance. I know that's a little early for it too, but...
Well, I mean, that's, yeah, that's exactly sort of what I'm getting at and all of that.
Just even if we approved it right now, it's like, okay, now what? We're, there's a lot of...
I'm, I'm just not comfortable with this. And I thought I was pretty clear at the last meeting that that was something that I thought was going to be important for Hatfield to add to this agreement, so.
Well, maybe we should make a, should we make a suggestion for some language and then have the attorney approve, have the attorney review it?
I mean, I think that language is as simple as this agreement is in effect until this project reaches 25% design, period. It expires at that point. That's all I wanted to say. And then we'll revisit it.
Why don't we just do that? We'll insert language in the agreement.
In case the attorney has any, our attorney has any other issues too, you know?
Yeah. So I mean, I think...
And he's just going to look at it anyway, right?
So we're recommending, the board, Select Board is recommending additional language that can be added and sent to Attorney Mullen to review. And then, once we receive it back from him, we'll forward it to Northampton planning.
I mean, that's my suggestion. I don't know how they feel, but that's just my concern with this, that's all.
So, Mark and Rich, I mean, if you, you certainly have some thoughts and ideas on the language, but yeah.
I think it's, I can say, very simple. You just put a term in, it is in effect until the project reaches 25% design, 25% design.
I'll be glad to draft something and send it to you.
And then you, then the presumption is, or is the presumption that if Hatfield is satisfied with the progress of the design to that point, that we would renew the agreement?
The presumption is that at that point, we'll review the proposed plan and we'll review a new MOU and...
You had indicated that at the first meeting with Northampton, that we'd have a new...
I'm not going to...
See, I don't even know whether at this 25% phase, an MOU is appropriate or whether an actual, I don't know if a contract is more appropriate. And that's something I guess that we could ask about as to whether or not...
I mean, I don't know, I don't, can't imagine DOT going forward funding unless both towns formally, you know, sign off on it, but I'm not, I don't know that for a fact.
Yeah.
I mean, as long as that 25% design includes, like, all of, you know, the, what it's going to look like at our end of the trail.
Yeah, and that's fine, I think you do that. I guess, I'm putting myself in Northampton's shoes, I guess what their feedback might be, well, we don't want to spend all this money with the chance that Hatfield's going to back out, you know?
But then, but aren't we allowed to back out of it? You're telling me we could back out of it? So then, that's not, that argument holds no water if, right? Like, I'm just not going to agree to something that I don't know what it is. That's, I, and you know what? They may feel totally differently. I don't know. I'm, just, just my, my take on it.
Yeah. I mean, the town meeting voted on a concept, you know, that there was a process that they thought they could vote for, which was a multi-use trail that connects. And hopefully, that can hold and as long as we stay within the parameters of the town meeting vote, whether there's no parking or more parking or less parking, that the presumption is that the project will move forward under those parameters and that Hatfield gets its input. If it doesn't want any parking at all, if it wants to let Northampton off the hook in terms of maintenance because they have decided, they have said that they will do the maintenance for the trip, for the 750 feet in Hatfield. And that's, but I hope that we stay within the parameters of the, of the town meeting.
I mean, it's, it is 100% my intention to honor the vote of town meeting, but I still, I don't know, we have an obligation to enter into agreements that make sense and that we know what we're entering into. It's pretty simple.
So we'll...
But I, you know, I'd love to hear from you guys.
I mean, I'm, I'm trying to, I can sort of understand both sides. I can understand the side that they don't want to move forward unless Hatfield's going to stay with it. And I also understand the side that, you know, town meeting approved it in principle. We did get some, some type of design of how they're going to build it previously. So we do have some information on what the intent of the design was. And I think the only issue is basically, and we do have something from town meeting that says, we do have a say in the parking, whether we want it or don't want it. So we do have some of the Ts crossed on this that I think your concerns are. And I mean, if the word, I mean, at 25%, I just say, we just get a chance to review it. And I don't want Northampton to feel that we're putting in wording that's going to stop the project.
No, that's not my intention. I'm not trying to stop the project, but, you know, I want to know what the project is.
Right. You want an opportunity to have genuine input on the design of the project before you sign off on it.
Yes.
Yes.
That's all.
Very simple.
We can find some language that will work for everybody.
I mean, I'm, yeah, I just think having it, having it only in effect until we reach that phase and then we just come back and revisit it. So I'm not trying to derail it, no pun intended. I'm not trying to, but, I mean, I have an obligation to enter into agreements on behalf of the town very cautiously, so.
Okay. Can we bring up one more side issue? And if, you know, if not time to discuss it tonight, that's fine, we can do it another time. But there was a letter in the Gazette over the weekend, someone's hiking over White Rock and they had, they didn't know that there was a target range over there. And so, you know, it was a family, they were frightened because there was, you know, so much shooting going on. So the question is, can, you know, and actually mentioned in the letter, which was a good point, can there be signage put up there that, I don't know if you know where they, right where Rocks Road meets, meets Mountain Road, there's a, there's a pit off into the woods a bit and this target shooting practice there. And, you know, it is quite loud, especially I think probably some guys, people with semi-automatics firing up there. So I'm just thinking if we had a sign, just, you know, beware, target practice or whatever, something that would catch people's eye as they're...
I thought there was a sign up there. I thought it was told there is a sign.
So we only put signage up when we're utilizing that space.
Okay.
And I think currently, right now, we are in search of maybe trying to get into a, into one of the local clubs for us as a department to be able to qualify because that's what we utilize that space as. The complaint that came that day was not actually for the police department. We were not the ones that were up there. It is considered recreational area. So people are obviously hiking, hunting seasons are just getting into full swing. So people are out, you know, obviously shooting as well. So as far as any laws or anything being broken, there was nothing to that source. But I think, you know, putting signage up there when it's, you know, pretty rare that, you know, it's, it's pretty infrequent that, that people tend to be up there. That would be, that would be up to their, their purview on that, but...
Hiking trails are near that area or no?
Yeah, I mean, the, one of the, I mean, I've been on actually that trail, one of the trails up there when there's been shooting going on. It is really loud, but I mean, I knew what was going on. But it's also, I mean, there is hiking, but there's also...
It's loud, but it's very contained up there too.
Right.
So there's no danger to anyone?
I wouldn't say so. I mean, I don't even know, to be honest, but I just...
I don't know the layout of their area.
It's just more of a weirdness thing. And, you know, there are bicyclists and even our, you know, off-road people around here. So it's not only hikers.
It's all the land we're talking about.
It's Hatfield.
Some of it, yeah, is owned by Hatfield.
It's town land, yeah.
So where that gravel pit is, is that, that is town property.
Okay.
But the trails do run right by the gravel pit, which is a logging road. And the corner of rocks and mountain takes a turn there. There's a little parking spot there where people park when they're going to go hiking or where they're going to walk their dogs or whatever. That's about 500 feet from the, from the pit, I think.
That's the conservation trail that students, interns were working on a few summers ago?
It's one of the routes up to White Rock, yeah.
Okay. And what are you suggesting the signs is just...
If there's a sign that just, you know, target, whatever you want to call it, target project, shooting range, you know?
Close by or something.
I didn't even know what the status was, whether people have to, whether people who want to shoot have to get town, have to get permission or notify the police department that they're going to shoot are on...
That was going to be one of my questions. So you can just go up to town property and just shoot?
Public land.
Public land.
So I mean, it'd be just like if somebody was hunting up in that area, it's, it's public property so they can, legally people can hunt up there as well.
So I mean, we, you know, it's not something...
I'd want it to be worded carefully so that people didn't think they were in danger from the shooting, but that it was just more of a, it's a noise thing, right? Than not a danger.
Right.
Well, I think that's up to, yeah, up to the police department to take a look and see where the trail goes by and, and see if there is a safety concern.
We know where, we know where it goes by.
Okay.
You know, we've, we've utilized that area for quite a few years.
Right.
At least for as long as I've been here.
Yep.
But, you know, we've, this is something we've actually discussed over the last few years mainly because of, you know, just more of a long lines of protecting the town, at least on our end of it. And, you know, so utilizing more of a established range. This is really an established range, so I would be cautious as to posting that because now that could, you could be looking at bringing the town into, you know, possible litigation down the road if something were to happen because now you're kind of establishing it as, as a range where it isn't.
Right.
It's literally a gravel pit on town property and people are just finding a safe space to where they can target shoot.
Well, maybe it's best just to think about this unless there's other issues happening or other complaints occurring.
Which is why we just bring signs out, we bring signage out and we actually post one out at the end of, at the end of the access coming into that pit when we're up there.
So we can't stop the shooting up there?
That would probably be a town council question, mainly because, again, it's, it's town property. And I, we wouldn't, there would be nothing for us, I think, to enforce it because it is legal to shoot on town property. You know, because you're able to hunt on town property, you're, you're able to fish on, on town land, you're able to hike on town land.
Right.
You know, it's, it's used as recreational area and shooting is recreational sport, whether some people don't agree with it or not, just like, you know, hiking, biking and everything else.
Well, that's an interesting...
This hasn't really been an issue before, has it? I mean...
I think it's come up occasionally. This, this was a public one, it was a, I don't know if you saw the letter.
I didn't see the letter.
I think by, I think by posting signage up there, I think the town might be opening itself up.
It's like acknowledging that that's what it...
More liability and as a...
Shooting range.
As a shooting range, which...
It's only known to some people.
Up till now.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, it seems like there's liability on both sides.
But it's an interesting issue and I'm, I didn't see the letter, so I'm glad you made aware. We'll maybe share the letter with Attorney Mullen and...
I mean, people go up there because it is, it's a very sealed off space up there. You know, the, the banks that are being shot into, you know, their 40 or 50 feet high banks.
Does the DPW even use that anymore? Does the DPW take, they use it still now?
Yeah. Not very often, but...
Well, it's something to think about, I guess, and wanted to bring it up because it, it was in the letter to the Gazette on Saturday.
Oh, it was in the newspaper?
Yeah.
Yeah, he said it was a letter to the...
I can leave you, I actually have a copy of it.
It was Friday, I think, October 13th, Friday, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it gets off...
It would be good to share with Attorney Mullen.
Gets off a little bit of a wrench, but...
Okay.
The point was made that, it isn't posted, so they didn't know, you know?
Yeah. Right. Okay. Thank you. I might take a look at that, Marlene.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Be back.
Well, you might as well come over to the comfy seats. Well, no, you're in the comfy seats.
Oh, I'll roll over.
Nice to see you.
Yes.
So you are here, the police department is requesting an MOU with the town of, well, it would be with Hatfield, right? I mean, this is with Sunderland. Oh, so we'd share them with Sunderland.
Correct.
I did... I did read this. Okay. And so this is to provide co-response clinical professional services. With, this is clinical and support options. So this would be trained people. This is, I guess, in situations where you need de-escalation and that sort of thing.
I can explain it.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll, I'll just let you program. I'll let you have the program.
Back in May, we actually have been working with both the town of Sunderland and the town of Whately. And we've been, there's, there's been grant funding out there for having a crisis services worker pretty much being out in the field with, with different departments. This is something that there are several of them already. I believe the MOU that you have in front of you is actually one that Irving has had. I believe that MOU is in service right now for several towns in the Franklin County area. Sunderland, applied for this grant through DMH, through the Department of Mental Health. That's where all the grant funding has been coming from. We, they applied for a full-time CSO. We had supplied, all three towns had supplied numbers for a year's worth of what were determined as mental health calls to where we felt as though a clinical support person would have been a, would have been a good person to have during those calls with us. I believe in the year period, I, I think the town of Hatfield, we had roughly about 100, I want to say it was right around 120 calls in a year span. I think Sunderland was right around the same area and then Whately, I think, was floating right around 100. So between the three towns, you were looking at roughly about, you know, 300 to 400 calls that a, so that a CSO worker could have been utilized on scene. You know, these are mental health calls, they're, you know, substance abuse calls. It's, there's, there's kind of a wide range. So what this grant will do is this would establish, let me backtrack. We actually applied for a full-time CSO. They had, they'd awarded us funding for part-time. So it would be a three-day-a-week caseworker. So, what this will do is this will put a caseworker that would service all three towns. We would rotate between the three towns who would have the caseworker. So basically, we'd have a caseworker three days a week between the three towns. We'd have that caseworker one day a week. So we would supply an officer outside of our normal patrol to basically, that's what their job is. They would respond to any, any call that would involve anything to do with.
The person from CSO, not our officer.
So, that, that person from CSO would actually be transported by a Hatfield officer.
I see.
Okay. Once, you know, the officer would be there to secure the scene and then the CSO would be brought in at that point. So it's basically bringing a crisis worker instead of getting that person to the hospital. They can do their general assessment out in the field with us. We've had this opportunity over the last couple of years where we've actually brought them out. Because somebody happened to be in the office, we've actually had them come out to a scene. They can actually do an initial interview there, just like they would do at a hospital and determine, you know, is this person good to go and stay home or should they go for further treatment? You know, obviously barring any other medical issues. So, this program's been going on right now in Franklin County. I think they've got two, possibly three different, different CSOs that are working different towns. And, but they're traveling from town to town to town. So if that CSO worker is riding with one of our officers one day, they would be covering all three towns. Okay? Same as if they're riding with Whately, same if they're riding with Sunderland. So if we, if that CSO worker is in Sunderland with that officer and we have a, a call to where we would want that crisis worker, we would contact them and they would actually come down to us. Same with, with us going to them.
And Sunderland would bring them.
Yep.
And we would bring them.
Correct.
Bring them to Sunderland.
So that officer that's with that, that CSO worker is dedicated to that CSO worker. So that's what they're here for. That's what they're doing. They're taking that person to wherever they.
In the tri-town.
Yep. To wherever they need to go.
So, is there, so you said we would have the person one day a week?
Yep. So we would be, we would be transporting, we would be transporting the, the worker one day a week. Whately would have one day a week. Sunderland would have one day a week.
Oh, so total, we only have three days.
That's what we've, that's what we've been given funding for at this point. If they, if they see at some point that, you know, our, our volume is, is greater. It's a one-year grant. So it started, the grant was supposed to run from July 1st to June 30th. Obviously, we're now coming up on November. We've, we finally got awarded the grant, I think, two weeks ago. So we've had to adjust the numbers. That's why the numbers are a little bit lower in that MOU.
But even if you don't have the caseworker here, you have 24/7 coverage, right?
Only on three days a week.
Or a phone call.
So it's not, it's, it would not be 24/7 coverage. It would be eight hours per day that we would have that caseworker.
No, I'm not saying the caseworker. I'm saying that I thought I read in here that if you don't have the caseworker and if an officer needs assistance on figuring something out due to a mental health crisis, there's a number he can call. There's somebody.
Yes.
Taking care of the.
That's already, we've already, we've had that for years.
Okay.
CSO has been in operation through the hospital, so we actually can reach out to, out to CSO. This is just kind of, we're expanding on that.
Okay.
Really is what that is and we're bringing them out into the field to basically to have them here with us. The 24 hours, it would be, we'd have to get them to them. You know, whether it be to their office, to the hospital, whatever, which ultimately, you know, now you're tying up your ambulance personnel to, you know, if you need to transport them or whatnot.
So that you, when you say you got a grant, I guess I misunderstood when you were saying you got a grant for three days. I thought you meant Hatfield did. So I thought the other towns maybe got them.
No.
It's the one that applied for the grant.
Sunderland applied. So total, it's three days. Yeah.
Yep. So, it, it's, like I said, at this point right now, we're at three days. Next year, when we start the application process, you know, they'll be able to look at our numbers again and determine, you know, maybe we'll get a fourth or fifth day or, you know, so just solely kind of working our way up. This is pretty much like their minimum of, of where they're at is.
I think it's great that you have another tool to help the police department with.
Well, and ultimately, that's really what it is. So, you know, we monitor Franklin County. Their, their social worker is all over the county up there. So, I think that Irving one, I believe there's seven towns involved with that one.
Wow.
So they're going, that one is, but they've got a full-time worker.
And it's still pretty effective even though you're
Oh, absolutely.
Deciding what days you're gonna have coverage. So, what days are you, would you do weekends?
That we have not, we haven't decided that yet. We're actually probably gonna be meeting next week. I actually just got an email today from, from CSO that they've found somebody for those hours. So we'll be meeting that person next Tuesday, I believe is, is the date that we set to meet. But we'll be discussing, you know, what we think the best timeframe is, you know, what us as the three different towns can make work for hours, but also be able to, you know, to where the, the CSO worker can, can work those hours as well. So it's gonna be.
Does this require we put an additional officer on when the CSO is here?
So that will be, so basically, the way this is set up is this would work pretty much as a detail. So the town of Sunderland took in all of the grant funding. Sunderland will be, is going to, is taking responsibility of paying out all funding. So, we will, if, if we have an officer that's working, we would send pretty much a detail bill, like what we would do for any outside company. We would send a detail bill to the town of Sunderland. They would pay that bill.
Does it come out of the grant though?
Yes. They will be paying us back out of that grant money.
So that, so it is an extra officer?
Yes.
Okay. But it's paid for by the.
Correct.
So where it says on page four, it says, each of the member towns can spend up to $13,582.50 in wages to be reimbursed by Sunderland. That's for our police officer.
So that is the amount basically split into thirds because that would be our one day per week from November 1st through the end of June. That's what that amount would come out to.
What about the, what about the pay for the CSO?
That's all coming out of the grant as well.
All right.
So Sunderland will be paying CSO, they will be paying Whately, and they will be paying our officers out of that grant. We just have to bill them for it.
Okay.
That's the only question I had on this. I wasn't sure how, what, what that.
So they're basically, they're controlling what the, the funding is. Like I said, that 13,000 is what we would ultimately take in to pay our officer for the one day a week from November 1st to June 30th.
And that should cover it?
Yep.
And then I, the section about insurance is, is requiring that CSO carry insurance. What are our obligations?
Our officers are already covered under our insurance.
I know, but what about covering this, this social worker?
CSO has all the coverage for, for that worker.
Employees.
So that, they are.
Kind of injury or anything, it's covered under them.
Caseworker is an employee of CSO. They are just coming out into the field and working with us.
I just wanted to.
Yep. So they're, they're covering their employee, we're covering our employee.
We may not have had a chance to see the emails that I had communicated to.
Very briefly, but.
So, yeah, town council reviewed it as well.
Some verbiage that, that town council wants to see.
Yeah. When I spoke to the chief last week, so I, I forwarded those recommended changes to the chief and the chief had, had stated that it had already been, the MOU had been reviewed by a, another lawyer. So, you know, my question to our attorney was, you know, what you're recommending, are they significant or, you know, are not so significant to the town? Would it put the town at risk if the select board went with the current form that was submitted? And he, 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 he was surprised that a lawyer had approved this previously.
That's, that's what I read quickly and, because I got the stuff recently, but.
So that caught my attention.
Well, I like good agreements. So can we have it?
So, you know, I.
I did actually reach out to Chief Demetropolis as well in Sunderland. And he said that their town council is also still in review. He has not heard back from them yet either. So what I will do is tomorrow, I will send our suggested changes up to him and they can maybe compare notes.
I mean, we don't meet again until November, what did you say, 14?
Right.
So that's, you know, but, I mean, if we had to do like a quick meeting just to approve this, you know, because I'm sure they want to get it approved. I understand.
I believe CSO has actually signed off on the MOU already at this point, so.
Who had?
Um, CSO.
Oh, okay.
Whately, I'm not sure on.
CSO, by the way, just so townspeople know, is clinical and support options, which is a provider of behavioral health services, mental health services, substance abuse services, very comprehensive organization. Just so that townspeople know. So, I, I mean, that's how, I, I mean, let's, let's get it right. Let's have our attorney like it, our attorney like it and then who knows what Sunderland's gonna come up with as well. So, I, that's how I feel.
Yeah, they're not big changes. It's just.
Yeah, but it's just kinda like, it's not really to the substance of the agreement. It's just kind of. So, I mean, I, and if you need it executed before the 14th, I mean, I would have no problem having a quick meeting.
I have no problem signing it off if you need it sooner.
You know, yeah, having a quick, just a quick meeting to, to take care of this. I mean, it's important that we get this started, particularly the grant, you know.
So this.
The ti, the clock is ticking.
Right. And just so you're aware, this MOU is only gonna be good in, going back to your last one, this MOU is only gonna be good through the end of June.
Mm-hmm.
We would actually, if, if the grant were to roll over, we would come back with, with a new, with a new MOU.
So I can see you have the effective date. You'd like it to be November 1st, so we'll.
Yep.
The board needs to meet.
We can probably get that done. We could, we could throw together just a quick.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for doing that. Getting all the three towns together and getting this done is great.
With CSO already being on board as well, it's something that we can start even if it had to wait until your next meeting. They didn't seem.
Well, we'll, we'll take our cues from you on that.
They didn't seem overly concerned to make sure that that was in place before.
Yep. If you need it before, just let Marlene know and she'll pull something together and we can make that happen. But, I mean, the, you know, these services, it seems to me, are, are good for our residents. You know, people that might be in crisis for a variety of different reasons. It's also good for our officers.
This is where a lot of policing is going. I mean, I've, I've been doing this job now for over 20 years and, you know, to have this opportunity, I, I think it's gonna be very beneficial, you know. There's been many times where I've said, you know, I wish we, we had this person here with us.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it would be nice to get to seven days a week. I mean, even shared among the three towns, but it would be nice because it's so random, the three days. I mean, you don't know when.
I think having it shared, you know, it, it's definitely.
More access.
It, it's more access, but I think it would keep that person, you know, busy enough between three towns. I, I think having our own sole person, we're, you know,
Right.
We're nowhere near that. I believe North Hampton actually has one set up for themselves, same with Holyoke. Greenfield, I, I believe Greenfield actually is in with Deerfield. So, those two towns actually share a, a worker as well. So that's, that's kind of the, the going trend right now.
Yeah, well, it's a good way to get ourselves started.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. So.
Well, thanks for your work on this.
Final draft on to that and we'll, we'll get it back over to you ASAP.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Madame Chair, request to take out of order, topic five, because.
Thank you. I was just about to say, it's under continued old business discussion.
He looks so fascinated sitting back there. Excellent idea, Ed.
Yeah.
Hi, Brian.
Good evening.
So we're gonna talk about the Day Pond Restoration Project. So there's a, a draft application here for a CPA.
So Brian, I shared the draft copy of the, just the application. I didn't give them all the other material at this point. They've, most of it is TRC's report, which they have, you know, already seen.
Sure.
But, yeah. But I, I think really the, the purpose of, of having it on the agenda tonight is again, to bring the select board up to date and Ed can jump in. But the, the more we get involved in this. Um, but the, the more we get involved in this project, it's, it's become quite clear that, um, a subcommittee would be necessary. Um, and if a member of the select board could represent that subcommittee, I'll just mention it.
Yeah, to back up a little bit, uh, there was thought of restoring the pond behind the high school because the pond's been used since, I think, nineteen thirty for fishing derbies and that pond could be used for seniors to walk over there, feed the ducks. It could be used for multiple uses, plus there's gonna be a walking path going there. So the fishing game, along with fishing game president, I think Brian, myself, we went to the CPC meeting to present, uh, an idea and from CPA, they, they expressed interest and I believe Open Space expressed in, interest. So Brian got more involved, which I let him speak to because he's, he's gotten his teeth into this and he's doing a great job.
The first part of this was to do an assessment of the pond and have the water quality checked, which we did that. So CPC had funded ten thousand dollars for that. And so now we're, we're moving to the next stage.
It could be a really nice recreational asset.
I think so.
Because Brian has worked with DEP before, he suggested having DEP come out and, and because if they're not on board, it ain't gonna go no place, so.
We discussed the permitting process.
I'll let you pick it up from there, Brian, cause we had the meeting with DEP.
We're going through the, uh, the preliminaries still for the project and so we've cleared the, uh, uh, technical part of it. Uh, we, we don't have, uh, contamination that is of any concern. We have some, some slight traces of, uh, of a, uh, of a, um, solvent, but it's in parts per billion, so it doesn't even trigger any reporting requirement, uh, with DEP. And we have some metals that are in the sediment and, uh, but those are found any, anywhere pretty much where there are, uh, uh, vehicles and equipment and, uh, and, and ponds. You, you'll find those, those levels, uh, and, uh, so, um, so we've cleared that hurdle. Uh, the, the, uh, the next hurdle is to, uh, was to have, uh, uh, the, um, uh, uh, local representative from DEP, Mark Stinson, uh, walked the property and, uh, basically, uh, to call out any potential objections uh, that, uh, DEP might have very, again, very early in the process. The, uh, so we're at the stage now where we have to, uh, begin to, uh, if we're moving forward with the project, uh, first of all, uh, ask the, uh, the board, uh, to, um, endorse the project and move, move toward an application, uh, to the CPC. Uh, and also to, um, begin to, uh, move along the permitting process because some of the permitting is very lengthy.
It could take up to almost a year, right?
Yeah, there's a, um...
Permitting through DEP, yes.
Yeah, there's a water, water quality permit that's required for removal of, uh, the sediment because they want to know where, uh, how you're doing it, where this stuff is going, even though it's a very small project. And, uh, so, uh, they are backed up, uh, they've recently taken on some more regulatory authority and, and so now they've, they've brought, uh, a lot of projects that wouldn't ordinarily be under their purview. Uh, they now have to approve. Um, ours, ours would have had to have approval anyway, uh, it's, it's the, the nature of the project. Um, but it takes, uh, it, uh, right now they're backed up almost a year. Um, we might be able to, because ours is so simple and straightforward, we might be able to jump the line a little bit. Uh, but we're, uh, we've built a year in, into the process, into the schedule.
It's a small pond, it's not, yeah, obviously, but we'll be working with Conservation Commission as well, right?
Yes, yep, um, yeah, if, we're, we're gonna have to file a notice of intent with the, uh, uh, Conservation Commission because we are, uh, working in the wetland. Um, and, uh, we, we also, um, we do not have, uh, good data, uh, on, on the site right now. Uh, there, uh, there is no survey for, uh, the, uh, for the Smith Academy property. Um, and, uh, so, uh, it was, uh, when it was built, uh, there was a, there was a plan uh, that was drawn, but it, uh, it does not look as though it's, uh, uh, that, uh, uh, there's no meets and bounds description, uh, shown on the plan, so.
Yeah.
Uh, we're, we're gonna have to do some survey work in and around the pond, make sure we own, uh, the pond.
That'd be great, to double check, yeah.
The only, the other problem with this project is, like, the Springfield office, Mark is out of Springfield. He, he's willing to offer support, but anything dealing with dredging comes out of Boston. And he says in Boston, it's a, it might take six months or longer.
Who's gonna say, what could go wrong?
And so he, so, meeting with Brian and Marlene, we had a powwow, we were saying, well, if we can at least move the permit forward, then when it gets to town meeting, if they approve it, then we're in pretty good shape. But if town meeting does approve it, that's another issue. But I mean, if we can at least move the permit, we get the permit going. But in order to get the permit, I think Brian's been in contact with the wa, water quality people to see what the cost might be because...
We talked with TCR representatives.
It's extensive permitting and there's...
Is that included in this application?
Yes, it's in, uh, it's in the budget. Um, well, it, I, but if, if we could, uh, find some funds, uh, to, ahead of, ahead of the, um, uh, the, the, um, uh, Community Preservation Act, uh, we, we could get the, uh, project going be, without waiting till May for town meeting approval. Uh, so we're, we're kind of, uh, hunting around, uh, right now for, uh, uh, some, some possibilities there. Um, I think the, uh, the, the budget, uh, that's there is pretty healthy. Um, and, uh, I've allowed for, uh, inflation, construction inflation of, uh, of, um, ten percent per year, uh, cause we're not gonna be into construction for about a year and a half under the best of circumstances at this point. Um, but I think the end result, uh, is definitely gonna be an asset, uh, for the, uh, for the town. Um, it, uh, it'll be a good spot, uh, we'll, we're going to, uh, take enough sediment out that we think that we'll be able to support a fish population, uh, year round and, uh, that we're, um, gonna put in a solar powered aeration system. We have that in, in the budget as well, uh, that will, uh, keep the, keep the pond, uh, healthy, um, year round and, uh, um, help to support, um, some, some local fishing and, and...
Could be ice skating, yeah.
Yes, yep, we could, we could definitely do that.
This would be such a nice, so nice, I can think of so many nice things about this. Especially located near Kapewong and near the school and...
And we still like to, you know, think about putting in a, a walkway.
Yeah, that, well, the, um, um, the, the walkway right now, uh, is, uh, um, has been staked out uh, by, uh, DPW and, and, uh, um, the school. And, uh, so it comes close to, but it, it doesn't, it, it doesn't abut the pond. So, uh, we have some, th- there's money in the budget to, uh, actually extend the walkway, but we won't be able to do it until after we finish our work because, uh, sediment removal is a messy job. It's, uh, it's trucks and the, the area in question is, uh, pretty mushy. It's, um, being, being next to the pond, uh, the, the ground is always soft there. And, uh, so we don't want to put, put a walkway in and have to rebuild it, um, after, after we've done our, uh, sediment removal. And, uh, so we'll, that'll, that'll be, uh, um, uh, the, the last phase of the project. We'll be providing the, uh, the walkway access from, from the existing, uh, walkway that's now, now being, uh, it's funded, it's currently funded, it's been staked out. And, uh, so I think they're, they're just probably just gonna do it, uh, next year. And, uh, we're, we're a year behind, so.
And I also want to bring up, we had talked previously about another walkway that would go to Kapewong, but it's been suggested by Mark to not do that right now, do the pond, um, because that might be a whole nother ball of wax. So our concentration is basically doing the pond first and then maybe later, if there's interest on having a walkway from Kapewong to there, then maybe that's something we can do.
That would be so nice.
But it might mess up the permitting if we do it all as one big project.
Right, yeah.
And we don't want to do that.
Well, we've learned that these things take patience and they need to happen incrementally and... But you gotta start somewhere, so. Brian, you've put a lot of time and thought into this and it's great to have your expertise, um, you know, involved in this, so thank you very much.
I don't think we've gotten, we would've gotten as far as we have without Brian's expertise on this, on this project, so I can't thank him enough for jumping on board this.
You don't, what do you need from us tonight? Nothing?
Well, I mean, Brian's talking about a survey, so we, do we know what the cost of the survey might be?
No, we do, uh, we haven't, uh, gotten a quote on it, uh, at this point. I have a, I have a scope, uh, that, that, uh, I've developed for the work. It's not a, uh, it's, it's not a whole lot of money, I don't think, but, but then again, think these things just seem to cost all out of proportion to what, what you think.
And so because of the CPA funding cycle, we can't use CPA funds without holding this up quite a bit.
Correct.
For the survey, so maybe it's something we'd have to think about ARPA funding for.
I, I took a look at the operating budget, my budget, Slipworth's budget, and I really just don't think...
So I think right now we're probably looking for a survey and we're also looking for the board to give its blessing and form a subcommittee that would be responsible for, uh, moving this project forward or at least trying to get this project to go forward.
And we need a, uh, we'd need some sort of approval from the, uh, from the board, I think, to, uh, put our application, uh, into, uh, the CPC, um, for, for this November, for November first.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we put in the application as presented, um, by the November first deadline.
A second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then on the, in terms of the subcommittee, um, did you have some ideas of who you'd want on there, like in terms of...
Sure, I, I think, uh, a, a member of the board is, is, uh, um, the usual way to do this and, uh, um, I think that, uh, Mike Zish from, uh, the Happy Hill Fishing Game Club has been involved with it and, and, uh, he would be an asset. Um, I also thought that, uh, a member of, uh, someone, a, a student from Smith Academy, uh, could, uh, contribute. It's on, it's on school property and, uh, um, we, we probably need, uh, a little bit of energy for our, uh, subcommittee and, and it'd be a good, good learning experience as well, so.
Be a great learning experience.
Biology or science, you know, as an interest in environment.
Interested in, you know, recreational, you know, fishing or that sort of thing too.
Were we also thinking somebody from Conservation Commission?
Well, um, I, uh, the Conservation Commission is, is gonna have to vote.
Well, that's true, they're gonna have to, yes, that's true, so we don't want to run against that.
For this notice of intent. And although they, they could recuse themselves, I suppose, but, uh, I, um...
Would, would it be a good idea to have maybe a DPW representative on there, like Phil or Garrett?
Or somebody from Open Space, that's who it was, from Open Space, not Conservation.
Yeah, and, uh, I mean, ordinarily this kind of, um, uh, fits into Open Space, but, uh, they've, they've got a full plate, I think, right now with all, all that they're doing and, and, uh, so, but if, if there's someone who wants to come on...
Or somebody from Recreation? Somebody from Recre, somebody from Recreation?
Yeah, maybe, maybe someone from Recreation.
You don't think Phil or Garrett having them on there?
Um, Garrett, he's just so busy.
Right.
Um, I just don't see him having the time. Um, I don't know about Phil, can ask, certainly can ask. Um, these meetings would be during the day anyway.
Yeah, I, 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 I met with Phil today, actually, to, um, see where the, uh, the, the walking path project was and also to ask him if he had a place to put the fill, the sediment that we're gonna take out.
Yeah, that's, I mean, there's a, there's a number of reasons why I can think of that somebody from DPW would be a good idea to have on there.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a bad idea. I just, I think, you know, Garrett could possibly, if the, you know, meetings are during the day, but I know his schedule's very busy during the day.
Well, maybe talk to Phil, see. Okay, I think that's great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, appreciate it.
The subcommittee, do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask about that.
So if the board would vote to, yeah, appoint, create a subcommittee and then you'll have to appoint those individuals at another meeting.
Did, did like a number of people?
Well, right now, we know it would be you, Mike Zish, right?
Mike, Ed.
And Ed, and somebody from the school.
I did ask Mike if he were interested and then, then the school, I, I would imagine that they're gonna have to take a little time to identify some.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can...
Maybe someone who's a junior so that they're, because these things do take time, sophomore, junior. Yeah.
Plus they have a fly fishing club now, so.
I know, that's what I was thinking, when you mentioned somebody from the school.
Yeah.
Yeah. And maybe a community member at large, I mean, I don't know, it's...
Sure.
There might be somebody who watches this who's interested and, or maybe has some expertise, a towns person who has some expertise in this area that might be great, so I'd be open to that. I mean, it can be something we build little by little.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But it's a start.
All right.
Excellent, Brian, thank you.
So we vote on, I'll make a motion to form a subcommittee.
Form a subcommittee, yes.
And...
And at least have Brian...
Have Brian, uh, Mike Zish, and a person appointed from both, which might be me. And a student from the school, correct?
Yes.
We'll take it from there. So that's, I guess that's my motion then.
Well, so I get it.
A motion made in second, any further discussion? Aye. Ed, you just got yourself another job.
That's, that's why you retire so you can do a lot of stuff, I guess.
Nice.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, so let's get back on track here, we'll go up to topic three, which is resignation and appointments and this is, um, an appointment to the local cultural council of Betty Snow. I'll take a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Betty Snow.
Betty Snow.
To the...
The cultural council.
Cultural council.
Local cultural council, so.
One second.
My motion.
Uh, a motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, next, um, your report, Marlene, so, um, the proposed pickleball court.
Court, so as you know, um, Cindy Doty came before the select board at a previous meeting and, um, I had been in communication, um, prior to that with the school superintendent and, um, and, and Smith Academy principal. Um, so the school committee met recently. They have, after meeting with residents from Colonial Acres, they have decided to take it off the table, take the idea of developing, uh, pickleball tennis courts behind Smith Academy. They're, yeah, they've decided to...
They've withdrawn that.
They've withdrawn that, but it doesn't mean that, you know, they're not trying to still work with, with the group. They may, they're looking at maybe some land over by the elementary school, possibly, um, so it'd be along Billings Way, possibly the cemetery. So I explained to them, really, that is town land, but it belongs to the cemetery. Well, the cemetery doesn't have an immediate, immediate need for, um, some of the land.
When I was on the board before, I negotiated that land purchase of the... When I was on the board before, I negotiated that land purchase of the, that extended the cemetery.
Right.
And the whole push behind it was that that would be, excuse me, great recreational land, probably for a good long time before the cemetery needed to have that space. And that was kind of how the town approached that, that it would be recreational land until such time, you know, that the cemetery needed it. So, I mean, that was the spirit behind that land purchase. And some of that land is where the community gardens is.
Community garden and some of the.
Back quite a ways, I don't know where, where it might get wet or, you know, whatever.
And some of the land that we lease for agricultural purposes, right, is back there.
Right.
Same area.
I'm glad you brought that up because I had this discussion with somebody in town and I said, I said, I swear, I remember when that land was given to the town, it, part of it wasn't intent that they could possibly use it for recreational purposes.
100%.
And the person I was with said, no, it's only supposed to be for the cemetery. I said, that's not true.
That's not true.
So I'm glad you brought that up.
No, it was, it was very clear. And that was really the intent of the people selling it too, that they liked the idea.
Right. So I think, you know, it would be certainly appropriate to, to talk with the cemetery commission about it. And as a matter of fact, I think they're meeting next week.
I mean, we just got to keep looking for options. It's hard to cite these.
I mean, back there, there's not going to be any noise that anybody's going to be bothered by.
Right.
I mean, that's been the big issue with these pickleball courts, is people don't like to hear the noise if it's near a community or a house or residence. There's been actual lawsuits I've read about in the paper.
Wow.
Yeah, I didn't know that, someone just shared that with me recently. It's like, oh.
Yeah, that one's a little bit more away from residents and they. Well, back to the drawing board, but that's, that's a start.
Did we ever hear anything about the proposed pickleball court that they were going to build over on 5 and 10?
I don't know what ever happened with that.
The, the last thing I heard, and that was quite some time ago, so the initial location they were looking at, there was wetlands there, so they were looking, I thought, further north. Again, that would, it was, it's property in Hatfield, but it was further north.
Okay.
And I haven't heard anything more about that.
See, I thought I heard that it was kind of preliminarily shot down by a planning board member.
Oh.
But that's, I don't know if that's, I don't know. But I haven't heard anything else about it. There's, so. Next is the exit interview. This came up, Marlene and I, I don't even, we were just having a discussion, I don't even know how this came up. And we, I asked if we, if the town does exit interviews and she said they, they do that, the department head does them. And I thought, well, that's not maybe the most effective way to do an exit interview.
Yeah.
So.
Good point.
We thought about maybe just a slight change to the policy here that would identify someone other than a department head to do the exit interviews. So, I mean, we, I don't know if, the proposal was for it to be the select board chair or the administrator or one or the other, I don't know, I mean.
Well, I think, yeah, I'm, I think having the chair or a member of the select board would, would be, it's sort of just, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, maybe if the language says the, the select board chair or their designee. And that way, if, if it's something that needs to happen quickly, you know, we could take turns doing something like that. Hopefully, there's not that many of them. But, you know.
I think the change makes, makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
We, we don't need to vote on that, do we?
It's a policy in HR, policy currently, and it reads that the exit interview is with the department head.
So I'll make a motion that we change the language, that the exit interview is with the select board chair or their designee. So that means if, if I'm the chair at the time, I could ask you to do it, you to do it, I could ask Marlene to do it, whatever makes sense. Both from a timing standpoint and, you know, maybe comfort level or whatever.
Right.
So.
It's perfect. You have a second.
Oh, you did second it? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Marlene, you'll just have to bring us into the loop on this.
Yes.
Okay.
I will.
Thank you.
So department heads need to be notified as well, that will be communicated to them. That, that's been changed.
Okay. So next, agricultural use of Billings Way property.
Speaking of Billings Way.
I know, a lot of, this is the agreement that we have with Harrison Bardwell.
This is to renew the agreement.
This is just to renew the agreement, which I have absolutely no problem with. I'm a good steward of the land and I'm glad he's doing what he's doing back there. So I, I don't have a problem with it at all. If anybody has questions.
No, the only conversation we've had this, on this in the past is, is there any way we can make it like three years instead of?
Well, it is a three year, it's with, so it, it was a one-year agreement with the option to renew for two one-year periods. So this is his second year, I believe.
Yeah, but I mean, we have to vote on, it's like we have to vote on it every year during the three-year period.
No, you're just signing the agreement, you're just, you know, extending the agreement. Yeah, when, but I get what you're saying. Why do it this way? I do understand what you're saying.
Like, we, we don't, we intend to let Harrison.
Right.
You know, do this. I mean, it always has to come up and go out to bid because that's how towns work.
Exactly, but by law, it can't be greater than three years, but you want to give each party the opportunity to consider whether you want to renew it.
I guess that, you know, to the, it also gives Harrison the opportunity to not renew. So it gives some flexibility on both sides. It's a matter of a quick vote at a meeting, so I guess it's all right.
Yeah, it's just.
But I think we, I, I'm fine with just voting this tonight.
I make a motion that we approve the agreement to license Billings Way property to Harrison Bardwell.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, you know, thank you to Harrison for, he does a good job. He does a good job and we're happy to have him doing that. Okay, employee personnel change, is this something we just signed?
No, actually, Slipboard needs to vote it.
Okay.
So this is an increase for.
Brenda.
Brenda, clerical payroll person, well deserved.
Well worth it.
Yeah. She's been employed since 2019, well, she started out as a temporary employee and then became.
For this stint.
Yeah.
But much longer than that overall. I, I'm fine with this, I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the rate increase for Mrs. Keir.
I'll second it.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you to Brenda for her never-ending service to Hatfield.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Next is, just as you know, there is a vacancy on the planning board and I just wanted to update the board, the planning board voted at their, their first meeting this month to fill the vacancy. So they have the option of either, you know, having the position filled or waiting until the annual election.
Yeah, it's kind of a wait until the annual election.
So the position's been posted, letters of interest are coming in.
Oh.
So the deadline is, I don't know if it's this Friday or next Friday. So it, my intent is for, at the select board's November 14th.
Okay.
Meeting, to schedule the planning board and to meet with the select board and vote to appoint somebody to the vacancy.
So who, I mean, last time we had sort of little interviews, right? It wasn't necessar, well, I mean, they, they were at a, they were at a meeting.
Library trustees, I remember.
No, this was, it was Eric Van Gill and Lee Bell, right?
You're right.
And we were here, the, the board was here and the planning board and we discussed it together.
That's right. I know for the library trustees did the same thing because we had two applicants and, yeah, for planning board, yes, you're right. Eric Van Gill and Lee Bell.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess we should do the same procedure this time.
Okay.
And I think they, they each had a few minutes to say a little bit about their, why they wanted to do it and their qualifications and.
Okay.
So if we can line that all up for that night. And, you know, if there's so many of them that it might take up, because if we're only meeting, you know, I, I could see that agenda getting a bit full because we're not meeting for almost a month. So I guess we could, if we had to, not suggesting, I'm not, but I mean, if we, we may have to have a little quick meeting for the Sunderland agreement, then maybe we could have just a, just those, those interviews isolated and then just make the decision on that agreement.
It's a good idea.
If, if, if the agenda's starting to look like it's filling up.
Okay.
And that gives, you know, the, the people interested in, you know, the position, maybe a little bit more time.
Yes, that would, okay.
Can't believe I just asked maybe to have an appointment. I'm not saying we have to do it that way, but.
That's good.
And then we have these two appointments for fire, we just signed these, right?
Yeah. So we took care of continued old business, the item there, day pond restoration. There was just one other, oh, Smith Academy Park Pavilion, oh, that's on there under a continued old business.
Oh, right.
So just quickly, an invitation to bid has been sent out and is available to general contractors for constructing the pavilion. Bids are due November 15th. So that will give, you know, Open Space Committee some time and I'll, I'm sure Rich Abbott will probably be here when I open the bids and we'll, we'll take those into review. So there'll be a further update on the bid results.
Well, let's hope, yeah. And then what is this topic six, expense of paying meals tax and rooms tax?
So this, a question came up, you know, when an employee in, in their, in their capacity as a town employee is required to go to conferences that may require overnight accommodations, you, you have to pay, you know, there's the additional fees for, for rooms, meals. And the employee typically will submit a request for reimbursement if they've put the hotel accommodations on a credit card or however they've paid it, you know, we reimburse them. Now, we don't reimburse for sales tax. I had a conversation with, with the accountant and he talked to the Division of Local Services about it and it would have to be an adoption to pay employees, or reimburse them, I should say, reimburse the meals tax and, and room tax. So right now, you know, we recently had a request for reimbursement for someone who was overnight at a conference and we put through the reimbursement for the actual expenses, we just didn't include the, the room tax.
That's ridiculous.
And I don't really think that's fair to the employee.
It's not fair, they can't get out, there's no way to avoid them paying them.
Yes.
So that's crazy. I mean, it's not even something that probably happens all that often, but it's, town, town employees should not have to absorb that, that's ridiculous. So whatever we need to do, adopt policy-wise.
Yeah. Board, and I was just thinking that we do have a clause in the HR policy about travel. So I think it would be, it would be helpful to have, to add, you know, a line item or a paragraph that employees.
And who did you talk to, DOR?
Division of Local Services.
So do they have sample?
So it is up to the, um, he didn't, they didn't, he didn't send me any kind of sample, he just said, if the board would consider authorizing a reasonable reimbursement for meals and room taxes, so a reasonable reimbursement, I would think you would reimburse the employee for that total amount, not just a percentage.
I mean, they have no control over what a room tax is or a meals tax is. So I, I mean, I would see if Division of Local Services has language or if there's another town that just already has language in a policy that we can just.
Yeah.
Replicate.
There may be, because.
I mean, if we're requiring them to travel for training or whatever it is, you shouldn't have to absorb any of that.
Yeah.
That's ridiculous.
Can we just add language to the HR policy? Would that be enough?
Well, yeah, but we need to know what the language is.
Yeah. Yeah, would be pretty. To reimbursement for room tax subject to, well, and, and the travel, the, whatever it is, meeting, conference, really has to be approved by the department head as well.
As long as it's like a pre-approved and whatever, I mean.
Right.
I mean.
That's crazy, yeah. Yeah, I felt bad, you know, I'm like, oh my God.
Yeah, that's not.
You shouldn't have to pay for that out of pocket.
I mean, I travel for work a lot, it all gets covered, so, yeah.
Okay. So I will follow up with the board for our next meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, John, thank you, Karen, thank you, Marlene.
You're welcome.